...the North Fork City Council to order and inform the public about the location of the Open Meetings Act posted over there in the council chambers and accessible to all members of the public. And if you would, please rise and give a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, interior border of the country's sands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Grandquist.
Here.
Arns.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Brings us to item number five. Need a motion for approval of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Your honor, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arns, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Clausen, Hildebrand abstaining, McCarthy, motion carries.
Item number five is approval, oh, excuse me, item number five here, number six, approval of the full agenda. So move. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
That brings us to item number nineteen under special presentations, which is a proclamation to recognize May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two as law enforcement Memorial Day and May fifteenth through May twenty-first of two thousand twenty-two as National Police Week. And I have in front of me a proclamation for National Police Week, May fifteenth through twenty-first of two thousand twenty-two, which says whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas, there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Norfolk Police Division. And whereas, the Norfolk Police Division plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights, freedoms, and property of all members of the community. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the Norfolk Police Division unceasingly provide this vital public service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Rob Merrill, President of the Norfolk City Council, on behalf of our citizens, declare the week of May fifteenth to May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, to be National Police Week in the city of Norfolk and May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of the law enforcement officers who, throughout their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duties. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Be it further resolved that I, in the Norfolk City Council, call upon all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their calling, have rendered a dedicated service to their community and have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. We publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. And we have someone to accept this proclamation, chief?
Just real briefly, you know, we're very fortunate at Norfolk to have a great team of men and women who are dedicated to the profession. There's some challenges nowadays, but we are all committed to continuing to fight that fight and to keep going forward. We like the opportunity to recognize those who have given their lives. There's way too many across the country that have lost their lives, and not only them, but their families. Our families pay a price, both those that have lost ones and those that are still doing the job. I mean, it's not just us, our families are also there to support us and to help pick up the pieces when times are tough. So, we appreciate the men and women of our department who are committed, we appreciate the support of our city council and our community, we appreciate this proclamation. Thank you very much.
That brings us to public hearings and related actions and item twenty, but before we go into this, we need a motion to adjourn as mayor and council and convene as a board of adjustment, of equalization, excuse me. And please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
So item twenty, going to open this public hearing for a board of equalization to hear and equalize special assessments for sanitary sewer extension district number two fifty-four. We're going to lump this together with, also with item number twenty-two and item number twenty-four.
You just want to state what those.
Yes. Item number twenty-two is for water extension district number one twenty-six, and item number twenty-four is for paving district number five one nine, all of that in the legacy bend fourth and fifth additions. And four, we'll comment on that, we would start with Steve Rannus.
Thanks, Mayor, Mayor and Council. I'll kind of read through these in the order that you opened them for public hearing, so twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-four. These are, number twenty is the special, the equalization for special assessments for the sanitary sewer district, the legacy bend fourth addition. Twenty-two is the water extension district number one twenty-six for legacy bend fourth addition. And item twenty-four is the equalization special assessments for the paving districts for legacy bends, both fourth and fifth edition. These are, these are special assessments, districts that were requested by the developer for the benefit of the developer to build out the public infrastructure that is mentioned here. The developer has reviewed all of these, the costs and the individual lot assessments. In this case, all assessments are based on the square foot or area method of calculation. The fourth addition consists of sixteen fam, single-family lots and four multifamily lots, two of those being larger multifamily lots and two being smaller duplex, triplex sized lots. The fifth addition, which is included in the paving district, does include another seven single-family lots in the cul-de-sac. The special assessments for sewer extension district number two fifty-four, that project totaled one hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and six cents. The total cost being assessed to the abutting properties is that full amount, one hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and six cents. The, you can see within the document, the individual lots and ownership of the individual lots and the area calculation for their assessment. The calculation by the square foot method would be fifty-two, slightly over fifty-two cents, point five two four nine zero seven two cents per square foot. I'll go on to calculations for water extension district number one twenty-six and legacy bend fourth addition. Again, this project here, the water project, total cost on this project is one hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred and four dollars and forty-nine cents. There are some oversized units in that. Basically, the city code establishes the eight-inch is, as the standard size for our water mains, anything above that, we pay as the city an oversized cost. There are eight thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents in oversized costs, so you remove that from the assessment, the assessed cost is one hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Moving to the paving district, the cost for the paving district, total cost of the project, one million two hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. The oversized costs or non-assessable cost, one hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and three cents, so the portion of the project being assessed, one million ninety-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Again, the individual, the calculation is in the agenda pack, and each, the calculation for each one of the lots is in the agenda pack. I will not read those. The primary benefit to the developer here is just that we are, we carry these costs for them during the development phase, as they sell off the lots, the assessments are then paid back to the city. So from a developer's perspective, where there's a lot of upfront cost to develop property, again, the most significant benefit here is that we carry those costs for them during this phase of the project.
It is a public hearing, if anybody would like to speak to this. Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will, I will close the hearing, but first we'll need a motion to adjourn as a board of equalization and reconvene as mayor and council.
I'll make the motion.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And that brings us, I believe, to item number twenty-one, which will be consideration of approval of ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-seven, levying special assessments in sanitary sewer extension district number two fifty-four, which is legacy bend fourth addition.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-seven.
If none, short title, please.
An ordinance levying special assessments upon the lots, parts of lots, lands, and real estate abutting upon and adjacent to and specifically benefited by the improvements in sanitary sewer extension district number two fifty-four of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to defray the cost of said improvements and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-seven carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition, I make a recommendation that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third.
Second. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-seven carries on second and third.
And that brings us to item number twenty-three, consideration of approval of ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-eight, levying special assessments in water extension district number one twenty-six, legacy bend fourth addition.
Is that a consideration, ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-eight?
Second. Discussion on this particular item?
Mayor and Council, if I may interrupt here, just for, just for, I guess, public record purposes, these do come with an interest rate, all of these for legacy bend carry an interest rate in the assessment of four percent. And I just wanted to point out that if these are paid off by the adjacent property within fifty days of invoice, there's a one point three nine percent reduction in that principal value, so I just thought that was worthy noting.
Thank you, Steve. If no discussion, please vote.
Oh, short title.
Oh, I'm sorry, short title, please.
An ordinance levying special assessments upon the lots, parts of lots, lands, and real estate abutting upon and adjacent to and specially benefited by the improvements in water extension district number one twenty-six of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to defray the cost of said improvements and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-eight carries on first reading.
Again, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-eight on second and third.
Discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-eight carries on second and third.
And that brings us to item number twenty-five, consideration of approval of ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-nine, levying special assessments in paving district number five nineteen, which is legacy bend fourth and fifth additions.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-nine.
Any further discussion? If not, short title, please.
An ordinance levying special assessments upon the lots, parts of lots, lands, and real estate abutting upon and adjacent to and specially benefited by the improvements in paving district number five nineteen of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to defray the cost of said improvements and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-nine carries on first reading.
Due to no objection, I will ask to suspend the rules and pass this on the second and third readings.
Discussion? Hearing that, please vote.
I'm missing one over there, fellas. There we go. All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-nine carries on second and third.
And that brings us to item number twenty-seven, consideration of approval of ordinance number fifty-seven eighty.
No, this one, number twenty-six, we're going to do that one second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, twenty-six. Item number twenty-six, public hearing for a board of equalization to hear and equalize special assessments for water extension district number one twenty-four, but before we do that, we will need a, we need to adjourn as mayor and council and convene as a board of equalization.
And before that?
Your honor, I will be abstaining from item number twenty-six, please.
Very good. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion, second.
So, that will, oh, yes, I'm sorry, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arns, Merrill, McCarthy, Jackson, Clausen, Hildebrand abstaining, Muren, motion carries.
So this is a public hearing for the board of equalization to hear and equalize special assessments for water extension district number one twenty-four, South Highway eighty-one. And we're going to look to Steve Rannus again, please.
Mayor Council, what's before you here is a water extension district for a water district that extends down Highway eighty-one as far south as Sherwood Road and does connect over to the city airport as well. This water extension was kicked off by several of the business owners down there that had contacted us, requesting, requesting the extension as a function of water quality in that area. Following that, city staff visited with other businesses in the area and ultimately brought forth the water district creation to you earlier last year. That is in place, and the project is complete. See here, just looking here, it looks like we've had five businesses connect, including the trailer park, which has about four dozen units on it, so several, several businesses and individuals currently benefiting from that. I'll read through some of the benefits of the project here as I, right after I go through the numbers on it, the total cost of the project was seven hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. In oversized costs, the city consumed one hundred and ninety-three thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. The airport itself is, is being assessed, one hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars. The remaining portion being assessed, the adjacent businesses and landowners, is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars, or roughly forty-seven and a half percent of the cost of the project. As I mentioned, there were some water quality issues in that area, the further south you go, the worse those got, down there along Sherwood, north of Sherwood, those facilities were in a, almost a bottled water situation. The trailer park I mentioned was, was on bottled water, being provided to them by a, by that business owner. I'm not going to go into a lot more detail there, but there was significant water quality issues along that, along that southern area. If you would like more information, I can bring up our, Dennis Watts, to discuss that in some detail, if so desired. But again, there were other, as a function of the wells, the water quality, the groundwater was hard on, on the wells down in that area. One of the benefits of being on municipal water is you don't have to worry about the quality or the quantity, we take care of all that at a centralized treating facility. Our, you know, we treat that to a domestic quality and are licensed to do so. There were ten, I believe, ten businesses on the corridor that, based on volume of employees and volume of customers, had to also maintain their domestic water quality license and certifications, and so they are able to discontinue that as a function of being on city water now. As a function of the quantity of water, there is, there is some benefit for fire protection as our fire crews would show up, there's, there's now fire hydrants along, along that corridor with sufficient quantity and pressure behind them to provide a good fire protection to that area. Again, being city water, the city provides the maintenance on any breakage that would occur, we do all the treating necessary to supply the water. Any wells or pumps that are also either in our system or wells and pumps that would have been on their system are maintained now by us. It is a twenty-year assessment, we have been extending our assessments out to, to reduce that burden as much as possible. Putting those, putting that infrastructure in today fixes the cost of that, whether they connect today or they choose to defer their connection until their system fails, it does lock that cost in at today's construction cost. There is an interest rate on this assessment at five percent. We do not force connection over until such time as their wells fail, so a little extra kind of benefit there. And then, of course, the city, the city sharing in the cost of the overall construction of the project is a, helps lower the cost to the, to the adjacent property owner. Those are, those are many of the benefits as a function of the project, and I'd certainly answer any questions you would have.
Quick question on that, did you say, are we, are these going to be with a hookup fee or are they going to be an automatic assessment?
These are, these are assessments, so they're assessed these.
I thought you said some about a hookup.
No, I, they would just be able to hook up whenever they, whenever they wanted to. We don't force a connection once, once our project's there.
This is a public hearing, if anyone would like to speak. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm fine.
Did I miss the election?
Mayor's out of town today. You get the B team today.
I just have a question for Steve, I guess. A week ago or two.
Excuse me, Paul, go ahead and state your name.
Paul Medelman. I have a lot out there that will be assessed. But I brought you last, two weeks ago, maybe, that lot that I showed you that I was, the county still had it as a tax lot, but it was the street, I assume I'm not being assessed for that.
I'm pretty comfortable, Paul, that that lot is not in here, I did look to see if that lot was in here, I did not see that lot in here.
Then one more, there is a, the road that goes into Peterson Ag and Norfolk Truck, the sixty-six foot strip there that I own, that have been assessed? It doesn't connect any, well, it does connect to my property, but it's not used.
Hey, just, just give me a second, Paul, and I will, I will answer that.
I don't even think it's a legal lot in a district.
Is it under, is it under Paul Medelman?
Paul Medelman, Alcorn Construction or Medelman's Life Development.
I do, I do, I'm.
I don't even see it in here.
I do not see that in here, Paul.
I believe it's sewer.
I think just the one.
Didn't assess it.
You're just assessed for the one parcel.
Yeah, UPS.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're actually parcel number one in, in our list, and that is the only parcel under Paul Medelman.
UPS, right, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Hearing nothing else, we're going to ask for a motion to adjourn as board of equalization and reconvene as mayor and council.
Right, motion. Second.
Please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arns, Merrill, McCarthy, Jackson, Clausen, Hildebrand abstaining, Muren, motion carries.
That brings us to item number twenty-seven, consideration of approval of ordinance number fifty-seven eighty, levying special assessments in water extension district number one twenty-four, South Highway eighty-one.
Is that our number fifty-seven eighty, consideration?
Discussion, any further discussion?
Mayor and Council, I'd just point out here that the interest rate on this is five percent, but it does carry that one point three nine percent reduction in the principal, if the principal is paid within fifty days.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Further comments? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance levying special assessments upon the lots, parts of lots, lands, and real estate abutting upon and adjacent to and specially benefited by the improvements in water. in water extension district number one twenty-four of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to defer the cost of said improvements and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arns, Merrill, McCarthy, Jackson, Clausen, Hildebrand, abstaining, Muren, ordinance number fifty-seven eighty carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules and pass ordinance five-seven-eight-zero on second and third.
Second.
Discussion? Please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arns, Merrill, McCarthy, Jackson, Clausen, Hildebrand, abstaining, Muren, ordinance number fifty-seven eighty carries on second and third.
Item number twenty-eight is a public hearing to consider an amendment to section twenty-three dash forty-two of the official city code to include an exemption to the sidewalk requirements to amend section twenty-three forty, dash forty-eight for clarification and to provide for documentation when a previously waived requirement has been met. And we will look to Val Grimes for some explanation.
Thank you. This sidewalk code proposed amendment came from multiple subcommittee discussions regarding the use and need of sidewalks in larger lot residential neighborhoods. Just as history, a few years ago, we put in code an automatic waiver for hard surfacing requirements of certain conditions that were in code were met. This sidewalk amendment was modeled off of the hard surfacing code as that has really worked well over the past few years when that's come up. This code, sidewalk code amendment says that at the time when a sidewalk or trail is adjacent to any lot of the subdivision, then the city will evaluate the need and design accordingly. So it's not an automatic five-foot sidewalk, ten-foot trail, or anything like that. We actually take a look at the need at the time. This leaves it flexible for the future. The proposed sidewalk amendment speaks to the specific conditions that need to be met to receive the automatic waiver, and then if those conditions are met, then an agreement is entered into with the property owner at the time of building because that is what actually kicks in, the requirement to build the sidewalk. As it says in the proposed code, the amendment will be filed and run with the land so that future owners will be able to find that in a title search. And by filling out the agreement, it proves, provides notice to anyone now and in the future so that there shouldn't be a surprise to anyone if and when the requirement of sidewalk and trail is initiated. This was also heard at Planning Commission, and brought up at Planning Commission was that when the template agreement was written, if this goes into place, that it includes something like what has been going in the, the sidewalk waivers, such as, you know, looking at the grading at the time of building and refraining from putting any landscaping trees, that sort of thing, in the potential area of where the sidewalk or trail may go in the future, just so that we don't have any issues down the road with that. That's not part of the code, but we did want to bring that up, that if this does get passed, we would probably look to put something like that in the template agreement.
Thank you, Val. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this? Please state your name and sign in, of course.
Good evening, Steve Carmazin, representing the Pines subdivision as the developer. I know I've spoken with most of you over the course of the last, well, year and a half or six months concerning various issues, this being one of them. Obviously, I'm coming here speaking in, or, or in favor of it, so I won't belabor you with, with that portion of it. More than anything, I just wanted to thank you all for at least taking the time to look at this, because I know this was not an issue that is specific to the Pines, but was brought to the council because of kind of what happened out there. So I appreciate everybody looking at it and, and at least taking the time to put in the hours of subcommittee meetings, because I know it went back and forth several times. And I appreciate everybody taking a look at it and, and hopefully, if it does pass, that it alleviates some of the waiver issues that have, have come up with large lot sizes in the past. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel, any discussion?
I'd like to point that Val made earlier, that it is, it is open-ended where if a sidewalk or a trail does butt up to the property, it'll be brought up for discussion and then discussed if there is need, and it won't be an automatic, you know, because there probably would be at that time, you know, obviously, of lots based out, what it would look like if needs or doesn't need. So I'd just like, thank you for putting that in there.
Further?
Is there a, I was listening, is there a way that when somebody comes in and sells a lot, it's divided down, but then it falls under the new sidewalks or does it no longer apply?
I would think that it would run with the land. I'm not quite sure how that would happen. Danny might have a better idea on that.
Yes. Because this ordinance and the change to the code specifically contemplates that it would run with the land, it'll be filed with the county. So that would be as, as part of, if somebody were to buy it, I mean, that would, that condition would go with the ordinance. So it would be something that would, you know, if you went down to purchase it in the title search, you would, you would find that, yes, that would, that would continue on with subsequent owners.
Danny, I think he's talking about if it happens to get subdivided in the future.
Right.
On what it followed through, all those subdivided portions of that lot.
I guess I, I can't speak to that. I don't know that this contemplates that. I, I don't even, I don't know what that would look like. I would, I think because of the, the specific nature of the sizes here, I mean, this talks about all lots are three acres or more in area. I would think that, sorry, I didn't answer your question very well. I would, I would think that just offhand, that if there, there was going to be a lot that was subdivided further, that it would probably get away from the specific categorical exemptions, namely the three acre ones. I, I think it would be, I think that it would no longer fall under this automatic exemption, and they'd probably have, have to get that in. But is that kind of what you would think too, Val?
I would think so, yeah, because if you split one lot, then you don't have the two-hundred feet of frontage anymore. They're smaller lots, they're under the three acres, so you wouldn't hit all those exemptions. So more than likely, I would think that if one lot gets split up into two, three, four, something like that, then as part of the, the plat, you would have that five-foot sidewalk automatically put on there. You wouldn't fall under the exemption anymore. Then I suppose, potentially, by doing that, you would then have sidewalk adjacent in the subdivision, which would then kick in everybody else potentially, or those people come in and ask for individual waivers and not an automatic exemption.
Right, and, but if it was a case where somehow, I guess, I can't, I can't necessarily envision it because, you know, I'm specifically thinking of here with the Pines. If you had a case where even with the subdivision, it was, it was such a small amount that you would still be a three-acre lot, this would follow that. I would think that this would follow that, as long as all of these exemptions that are in the, because E says that the exemption is automatic, or that it'll be allowed if all of the following are met, so if all seven of those can still be met with the, with the subdivision of that property, then it would, it would follow. So I think it could go either way.
You'd sure be an unpopular neighbor.
Absolutely.
It would be an unpopular, yeah.
You wanted to subdivide your lot to the three-acre subdivision.
I don't, I don't know how well that would go, right? I don't know if.
You'd have to get zoning changed.
If that's been contemplated as a part of the Pines or not.
You'd be forcing everything in, it's not gonna.
Val, do you think the wording, it will be filed and run with the land? Doesn't say anything about being subdivided. Do you think that terminology, run with the land as long as it is still its, its current size? Because if somebody does want to subdivide that in R-one lots, I don't know, it says right here, runs with the land. As long as the zoning or the size does not change.
You'd have to go from R, R-one. You'd have to change all your zoning, I don't.
You would.
And then you'd have to have water sewer brought to your lot. You know what I'm saying?
No, no, I, I get that, but I'm just saying, it says it runs with the land.
I mean, that's kind of generally how we, we've always phrased it, but is it run with the filed legal description?
Well, as soon as you go from R, R, R-one, it would change the whole.
Right.
You're gonna have to do sidewalks.
Look, you wouldn't, because it would run with the land.
How would you?
Waiver's given. I mean, that's how I'm interpreting it. Waiver's given for that piece of property, and if you did divide it, maybe I'm reading it incorrectly, but.
Isn't the waiver only given to that particular property if they meet A, B, C, D, E, F? And once you're out of compliance of that, A, B, C, D, E, F, then, on my understanding, the council then has a wherewithal to come in and say, hey, we're going to require this or we're not going to require this, just like with the sidewalk budding up to your property or a trail.
And it's filed on a certain legal description, so lot one of whatever, that it runs with that land.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Very important.
Any other discussion? If not, Planning Commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May third, two thousand twenty-two to consider approval of an amendment to section twenty-three dash forty-two of the official city code to include an exemption to the sidewalk requirements, to amend section twenty-three dash forty-eight for clarification, and to provide for documentation when a previously waived requirement has been met. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment with a nine to zero vote.
Thank you. We're going to close the public hearing and go to item number twenty-nine, which is consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-one approving an amendment to section twenty-three dash forty-two of the official city code to include an exemption to the sidewalk requirements, to amend section twenty-three dash forty-eight for clarification and to provide for documentation when a previously waived requirement has been met. So we're looking for consideration of that ordinance.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-one. Second.
Any further discussion? None, please vote.
Oh.
No, excuse me, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section twenty-three dash forty-two of the official city code to include an exemption to the sidewalk requirements, to amend section twenty-three dash forty-eight for clarification, and provide for documentation when a previously waived requirement has been met, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-one carries on first reading.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules, to pass ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-one on second and third.
You have second? Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-one carries on second and third.
Item number thirty, a public hearing to consider the First Amendment to the redevelopment plan for Medelman's Lake redevelopment area of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, for purpose of setting forth phase two of the project. Randy Gates?
Yes. At the April fourth Community Development Agency meeting, the agency accepted the First Amendment to the redevelopment plan for Medelman's Lake redevelopment area, setting forth phase two of the project, and forwarded it to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. My commission held a hearing on this First Amendment to the plan after April nineteenth, meeting and recommended approval on a six to zero vote. The Community Development Agency approved resolution twenty-two dash four on May second, recommending approval of the First Amendment to the plan of the city council. Redevelopment plan for Medelman's Lake redevelopment area approved by the city council on August twenty-one, twenty seventeen, provides for the redevelopment of the Medelman's Lake redevelopment area in multiple phases, with each phase requiring an amendment to the plan. Redevelopers moving forward with the next phase and extending infrastructure southeast along the lake to provide for seventeen lakeside homes and three off-lake homes. Phase two is expected to be constructed in multiple subphases over the next six years. Total estimated cost of creating the build of the lots in phase two is estimated to be almost three point one million, price of one point eight million, leveraging almost one point three million of redevelopment funds, plus the cost to construct the homes. Cost of developing lots exceeds the revenue expected from lot sales, and without the project is not economically feasible. Glad to answer any questions, and the redevelopment is also here tonight and available to answer questions.
Welcome back.
Good evening, mayor and council. Do you have any questions, I guess, I can ask? This is just a continuation, as Randy mentioned, a continuation of the Medelman's Lake development. This is the second phase of a eight-to-ten-phase project, maybe. So it's just following suit with the original plan.
Any questions? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Hearing nothing else, we will close this public hearing and go to item number thirty-one. Consideration of resolution number twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen approving the First Amendment to the redevelopment plan for Medelman's Lake redevelopment area of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, for the purpose of setting forth phase two of the project. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen is adopted.
Brings us to our regular agenda, item number thirty-two. Looking for a motion to, to consider, uh, excuse me, consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-four approving an amendment to the official city code to enact division seven to article eight of chapter twenty-seven of the official city code, providing for the creation of a highway corridor overlay district. Ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-four passed on first reading only at the May second, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-four.
Second. And any discussion, Val? You want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, we had something come up following the first reading two Mondays ago. I believe you all got that email here, I believe, late last week, and another one today. It's specific to billboards needing a cup if it is a new one. So I, I did have a conversation with the person today and through email last week about the, the fifty to fifty-five, almost sixty billboards that we have in town currently would be able to be rebuilt if something happened to them without the need of a cup, that it would just require brand-new ones being put in, in a new place that would need that. He would ask that you potentially table this tonight, so that he has a chance to come speak to you himself on the June sixth meeting, because there is no discussion on the third reading if you do pass it on second reading tonight. It's up to you whether you want to move forward with it as is, or you want to look at various options for potentially billboards specifically. That's the only thing that this person objected to, was getting a cup for new billboards.
So it was an objection of the cup process, the conditional use process, not the availability of waivers or restrictive language that would be more restrictive than the federal or the state languages?
That's the way I understand it, yeah. It was. It was the extra step to get a, a conditional use permit for a new billboard.
Okay.
Uh, one question about the billboards too. When, if you did change ownership on a billboard, then would you be not in compliance?
No, it's, if it's up, it's, it's fine. Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I still have some questions on this. I know that, uh, this was overwhelmingly passed at the last, uh, city council meeting, but I do have a few questions, and I, and I kind of went into detail with them at the last meeting, obviously. Um, with this being brought up, I just feel like the fact that we're running into a situation at the next meeting that we won't be able to talk, obviously, I think it might be to our benefit to table tonight. I don't know if I'm gonna give much support on that, but, uh, I think that would be not a bad idea. I would like to see maybe this go to a subcommittee and have some discussion before our next city council meeting, just on a couple of small areas. Uh, I think overall, Val's done a tremendous job with this, and I know this is a big, uh, big thing for a lot of staff and, um, our mayor especially, you know, wants to see this. And, uh, so I'm not trying to stand in the way of anything, I just feel like there, there still can be some good conversation. So that'd be where I'm at on this. Said I don't know where I'm gonna lie on this, because last time I spoke a long time, and, uh, but... So, yeah, that's where I'm at, so I would, uh, offer to, uh, table.
So we have, we have, um, yeah, we have a motion and a second, uh, to table item 32, and there is no discussion on that, so please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arms, McCarthy, Muren, Clausen, and Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Merrill and Jackson, motion to table carries.
All right, that brings us to item number 33. Consideration of ordinance number 5775 approving a highway corridor overlay district map, ordinance number 57, oh, sorry. Yeah, 5775 passed on first reading only at the May 2nd, 2022 city council meeting. So, sitting at 26.
The first one, yeah, just, just a motion to table this one as well.
Okay, so we'll just need a, a motion to table this as well.
I would make the motion to table.
All right. Please vote.
There we go.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5775 is tabled.
Item number 34 is, we're looking for, uh, consideration of resolution 2022-15 to remove the no parking zone located along the south side of Riverpoint Square at 301 West Norfolk Avenue and reestablish the five parking stalls in that location.
Consideration of resolutions 2022-15, second that.
Good. Any discussion? Steve, would you like to, Steve Ramos, would you like to weigh in on this, please?
Mayor, Council, I sure can. Um, last fall is a function of an increased activity related to the use of the, the pocket park there, um, and managing the, the needs for, for stage and farmer's market and any other activity that may need to access that parking, those five parking stalls around the south side. Um, it became difficult for staff to manage that and meet the needs of those venues that were using the park. And so a, an ordinance was brought to the council to go ahead and just remove the parking designation there, which was done and passed. Subsequent to that, that ordinance going into place, um, we did not immediately mark off in any way really those parking stalls, and so those were continued to be used, I think, until earlier this spring, um, at which time, uh, there was some outreach, again, from some of the event users, and, uh, no parking signs were installed, uh, there to help enforce the ordinance. However, as a function of that, uh, staff and, and some of the, um, entities that were using the park have re-engaged in conversation now about the fact that, um, there was no parking there, um, you know, how we were impacting some of the downtown businesses by removing parking, either along Norfolk Avenue as a function of the mid-block crossings, um, or some of the reconstruction there of, of Riverpoint Square itself and some loss of parking there. So, A, there was some thought that we were continuing to squeeze parking, um, and, uh, you know, was that really gonna be any more convenient for us to manage in the long term? So as staff, we got back together and I, we, we've agreed to manage that through, uh, the street department and our public safety officers, um, kind of coordinating some conversation and maybe trying to close it off earlier in the days on special events, um, but otherwise leave it open for parking.
Thank you, Steve.
I wasn't even down there on Friday night when all flights were, so apparently we had our department.
Further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2022-15 is adopted.
Item number 35, consideration of approval of amendment number two to the engineering contract with JEO Consulting Group, Inc. for the Norfolk First Street roadway and bridge project for an amount not to exceed $105,000. Looking for a motion?
Second.
And Steve, once again?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as, this is an amendment for the First Street Bridge, um, the Brosh Avenue stormwater improvements. Um, this is final design associated with those projects. As we were moving through from preliminary design into final bid documents, um, some of the scope within the project evolved, um, in addition to the extended delays with the US Army Corps of Engineers in terms of the 404 permit acquisition and the process and, and requirements that, uh, we went through to achieve, uh, receiving that permit and subsequently, uh, are in the current, currently in the, in, uh, have resubmitted for some permit modifications and are waiting for those modifications. The Nor, the Brosh Avenue Storm Sewer Project, that was a fairly substantial storm sewer improvement on Brosh Avenue. We wanted to make sure, we knew there were, there was flooding activity in that corridor during significant events. We worked hard in the engineering and, uh, with studies to make sure that when that project was over, we were not, you know, we had alleviated the issue. It was a, it's a fairly substantial storm sewer down there, I don't recall the number exactly. I think it's 48 inches, might be bigger than a 48-inch storm sewer. We terminated that at Brosh and First Street. Uh, the intent was it was gonna go straight east along the backside of the old Alco building and then terminate into the river. Um, subsequent, subsequent to those preliminary, uh, that preliminary design, the whole river project came to be exactly where we were gonna terminate that, uh, was not fixed, uh, until probably about a year ago. As we looked at three different options on, on how to terminate that into the river, um, with the different, um, flow line, I guess, of the river as a function of the, the grade changes that were going on, it needed to tie in in a, in a certain way at a certain, um, flow line or hydraulic elevation. So, working through those, some, some different alternatives there, ultimately, we selected a route that runs it down, down First Street, goes down the outside northbound lane of First Street, connects into Norfolk Avenue. So there was quite a bit more work involved in, in the alignment, um, the, the street removal, sidewalk impacts, uh, the, uh, detour of traffic and so forth as a function of all of that work. So there was increasing, an increase in scope related to that. We adjusted, as we were moving through this, we were cognizant of the, of the changes in scope that were occurring in the project, and we, and we, we kept track of that and we're modifying our, our master project budget and scope as a function of that. With the project, uh, with that design phase now wrapping up, uh, we have not been billed for any of those services. Uh, this is, this is in a, kind of like a final change order per se on a construction project. This is a final contract amendment that goes back and rectifies our, our, uh, design contract to kind of meet some of these additional scope items. I would point out, on the amendment that was provided by JEO, on the back of that is a table. Um, the table shows for task 900, the original estimated hours that we thought we were gonna consume as a function of that task, actual hours of effort that were employed by JEO, uh, 326 hours. And then after the fact, as we sat down with JEO and, and worked through and, and talked about the level of effort that was required from point A to point B, um, and where we thought there, you know, there was probably some excessive, uh, um, effort, uh, per se, we negotiated those down to, again, that area that is shown there in negotiated hours. So, on task 900, they originally estimated 218 hours, uh, within their project management system, they tracked 326 hours, and we have, um, agreed that 218 hours would be reasonable for the, the work, uh, the work and work deliverables on that, on that phase. For task 1000, again, you'll see the same, there, originally we estimated 261 hours. Uh, level of effort was 460 hours. And again, sitting down with JEO and working through that, um, we, we were comfortable that 364 hours represented the level of effort on those four items there for additional environmental and wetland work. And the same on, on task 1100 for the bidding process. During the bids, the, we weren't exactly sure how we were gonna package all this up. In the end, we packaged the river improvements, the bridge replacement, the roundabout, and the drainage improvements are all packaged into one set of plans. So, a lot going on there, it, it increased the intensity of questions and just the coordination of different questions and components in the project. Ultimately, it did lead to, uh, some understanding that there was gonna be, be a delay in bridge girder delivery. So as a function of that, we ended up going back into the bid documents and allowing for an extension on that project into 2023 for a 2023 completion and, and reissuing bid documents around that. So that, that resulted in about an additional 42 hours there in staff time during the bidding process. Level of effort expended was 48 hours, and we were comfortable with the 42 hours. So this, this would bring the project to, again, kind of, it's a kind of a final change order type, type deal, the contract amendment, uh, that, that brings us through final, final design, uh, and bidding on those projects. Um, you know, they're included in the, in the second, and this is the second amendment, included in amendment number one was some costs associated with wetland mitigation in the five-year monitoring period. Those dollars are still in our contract unexpended and would be expended after the wetland mitigation, uh, after the wetland site is, is, is in place and we're going through those five years of mitigation. Any questions?
This really kind of speaks to that discussion we had a couple of weeks ago about scope and contracting with these folks to get that done. It allows you, it allows us a lot of flexibility.
Correct.
Not only in doing the project, but also bringing the cost down the project, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. That, that, uh, specific kind of conversation is around construction administration services. Um, as you look at, at the number of components of this project that JEO is involved, it's the same thing here, we're, we're able to, with this change order, we're bringing, um, these projects in at 10.7% in a design fee. Um, there is, depending on how you wanna look at the wetland component, certainly the river project itself has some wetlands in there. Uh, we have a separate contract for that, but to the extent that all the wetlands was really managed by JEO, not through Riverwise, which is where that contract is, we've got those dollars here. If you were to take out about $50,000 that's associated with the river, you're at about 9.5% in an engineering fee on the project. So, certainly very well within what we see for engineering fees on a, um, you know, a series of projects that are all related, that are really complex.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Steve, I, I guess I was under the assumption there was final design, and, uh, the direction of the stormwater sewer has been in discussion for years, if I wanna say that, when we did Brosh and then where it stops. And it seems like through this project, that was, that was all part of it. Now that we see a change here, it's throwing me for a loop personally. And then, uh, wetland mitigation, I think, I feel the same way. We knew, we knew we'd have to do something, and to see changes there.
Right.
Kind of throws me off.
So we had 100 and, we had right at about 100,000, 95,000 in the budget for wetland mitigation, and we knew that, we knew we were gonna be expending every, every penny of that. As of the last contract modification, uh, we were at, oh, probably about 47,000 in, in fees against that wetland mitigation. Um, and I'd have to go back and look at the timing on that, um, February 16th of 2021, we approved amendment number one. Um, and we didn't get the, we were still working on, uh, with the Corps quite extensively from, from that time period all the way through October, uh, before we finally received the, the wetland mitigation, uh, or the wetland permit. During, and during that final design, we knew we were expending dollars that were out of scope, out of the scope of amendment number one, and we were, we were expending dollars at other $50,000 or so that was sitting there in our budget. So, I don't know that I answered your question there, but we've always, you know, 50,000, let's see here, of this 105, if we were to back away, all the way back up to the 2000, or the February 2020 budget, um, I would have to look exactly, but about 85,000 of this was included in that 2020 budget. The additional 20 to 25,000 here, um, is some of that additional scope that we were not, not anticipating at that time. Actually, I can tell you here, 36,500, uh, plus the 7,000, so about 45,000 of this was truly related to out-of-scope work that's developed since, um, since that final, since that last amendment. We knew, yes, we did know that we were gonna have to adjust the route of that, of that storm sewer coming off Brosh. We didn't, we didn't know the extents of that. Uh, I'd have to look back, when we kind of came to council with the two or three options there and ultimately selected Norfolk Avenue as the connection point for that, but, um, that, you know, there's, there's no question in my mind that that was the right decision, the right place to, to take the storm sewer versus running it either through the Alco site, we had looked at running it through the Alco site and coordinating with that developer, or running it along the southern boundary of the Alco site, or just connecting into Norfolk. Those were the three alternates that we looked at.
And that's probably where I'm getting to, Steve, is we knew we had to do something anyway. Why is there an additional cost to do something we already knew we were gonna have to do?
We, we probably picked the most expensive route in terms of design to, to terminate at. Um, you know, running all the way down First Street into Norfolk Avenue, just the, the, if we would've gone, even to go through the center of the Alco site and terminate over into the river, um, would've been much easier. would have been much easier in terms of the level of effort required by, by our design team to complete, primarily in, in the traffic component of that, traffic detours associated with east, eastbound, eastbound Norfolk Avenue, westbound Norfolk Avenue, and trying to sequence the construction to get all that tied in. It was just, I certainly didn't anticipate that we were going to be going through that type of effort from a design perspective to terminate that sewer. Either extending straight north of Alco or, or coming down, extending through Alco or along the southern side of Alco, any of those options would have been substantially less costly to design.
Steve, why do you think the hours are so different just for the wetland portion? That should have been a fairly defined period and yet it's like a hundred and ninety-nine additional hours just for that particular area? Is there something they ran into?
Working through the, working through the permit process with the core, it's a long process, unfortunately. And the longer that process takes, the more meetings there are, the more contact there is with the Corps of Engineers, the more iterations there are by our, by our consultant team as they're working with the Corps of Engineers towards that permit. It, and we, we, we anticipated we were going to be spending up, up in that ninety, ninety-five thousand dollar range. Again, this, this gets us, yeah, let me look here, at sixty-one five, this is about thirteen thousand five hundred over what we anticipated we would spend from a budget perspective. I don't have any other explanation for it. It's just, it's a long process and the longer that process is, the more money is spent. You know, we, we were sitting in a council meeting last February where I got a call from the Corps of Engineers that said we would have that permit in six weeks. That six weeks turned into six months, you know, and lots, lots of iteration of conversations and comments and plans and design and. It's just like, just like having a contractor. If you're, you're on site doing, doing any, any kind of a construction work as a contractor, if you're extended six months on that site, that six months is costing you money. And it's the same for, it's the same for us. When, when a permit agency like that extends that conversation, the, the, the number of iterations of, of conversations we're going through and turning comments around and documents around and revising documents just goes up.
I'm just going to blame it on the roundabout. That's a serious question, honestly. When that, when that, the storm sewer came down Brash, did that change the design that is where we turned?
When the storm?
Because initially we passed Brash without the roundabout included. Then the roundabout came on and we did First Street and the bridge for those design phases. So that storm sewer would have once ran up to First Street. Was there, when the roundabout was voted in, trying to put some blame on this roundabout?
Yeah.
With that.
Whether it was, whether it was a, whether it was a T-intersection, yeah, I mean, the routing of the storm sewer has, has no bearing on what, what the intersection itself is. Norfolk Avenue happens to have this, the system that's in Norfolk Avenue has the capacity, it's a very large system and it has the capacity to take this.
That's the reason for the reroute is?
Right.
Even though it costs more money?
Yeah. It, it costs, it costs us, it costs us more money to design, but it didn't, it's not, well, costing us, it's costing us probably as much money to construct. But to go straight, A, to go straight east behind Alco just no longer became an option. We would have had to gone east behind Alco, kept it in the pipe and ran it almost all the way down to Norfolk inside the pipe in order to, in order to have it exit at the correct rate.
Why wasn't it an option?
Pardon?
I missed, why wasn't it an option?
Doing that? Well, it just didn't make sense, I guess, to us to have, to have that as an option. To get that in behind the Alco site with our force main back there would have been, I mean, that would have been extremely deep. I, I don't remember how deep that is, fifteen feet deep. We would have had to support the Alco building itself to get in that deep. And we have our force maintenance that sits right back there. So it really, it really wasn't an appropriate corridor to be putting a deep storm sewer.
Was it, was it, when it was going to go behind Alco, just refresh my memory, that was also going to be on private right of way and not public right of way? And that was another decisive factor to go to Norfolk Avenue?
That was, would you say yes? So it's a, being as close to the Alco site as we were, as deep as we were.
And construction, just the equipment to do the construction work was a very tight order.
Yeah. It was, it was very easy way back when we were working on Brash and preliminary, looking at how we were going to exit that without, without looking too deep or, or too hard at, at what that solution looked like to run that straight east. It looked like that was the right solution. As you start digging into the design deep, you know, harder and harder, the types of soils we have, the depth, we would have had to have sheet pile support all along the backside. That whole north side of Alco would have had to have sheet pile in it in order to dig a trench, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen feet by the time you get down to where your bedding would be for, for that deep of a storm sewer. But just, you know, I, I would say we're, we're probably, you know, without running through the calculations, we're probably saving, saving money compared to what we would have had to do to stabilize a trench wall that deep, you know, back there.
We're proving an increase in contract that's going to help.
I, I believe so.
Get your best value.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point.
Yeah, right.
And we also have to remember that what we're, what's in front of us is an amendment to the engineering contract, not, not a change in how it's going to be built.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Merrill, Arns, McCarthy, Muren, Jackson, Clausen, Hildebrand, voting in opposition. Grand Quest, motion carries.
That brings us to item number thirty-six. Looking for consideration of approval to purchase a second pole behind attenuator through a Minnesota state bid contract from Warning Lights in the amount of thirty-one thousand and three dollars for use by the street division. And I believe Will is here to talk about that. Good evening, sir.
Uh, Mayor Council, so I think you probably got the packet in front of you on that, so.
Excuse me, Will.
Yeah.
Just for, uh, rules sake, we do need a motion.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Right, right back to you.
So the first, there's, the next one kind of ties in with this also, but the first one's on the attenuator. You guys had laid out a general fund in the capital outlay previous before I was here. And we purchased the first attenuator and have gotten a lot of use out of it. And then with artillery road, artillery, artillery roads, we're finding that we could use it in a lot more places. So when you have two crews out, you know, they're kind of really asking, well, why do one crew get in one and, you know, why, why aren't we, this type deal? Not that it would be out every day, but when we're on those roads, we've had good response with it from the public seeing it too, so on and so forth, when we just, you know, they make comments on it. You know, like right now, we could probably use three or four of them, just the different crews we got going, just with the priority of work that we're doing and maybe the changes from before for the work that was getting done. So when you go through the numbers with some of the stuff we purchased, going through state bid processes and different things, we still wouldn't be going over the cost of what you had in that outlay. With that thirty-one thousand three, it's two hundred and forty-five dollars higher than the previous one. They had forgot to put a crank or something on the last one that they missed and that was, so that's why this is a little bit higher. And so with that money, we thought maybe this would be a good place to try to get that with just the safety of the guys or with the, with pass.
Questions?
I'll agree, Will. I think it's a, a good investment, right? And I've seen it already out on the streets and it's very noticeable and very helpful. Saw it on two seventy-five Omaha Avenue, however you want to call it. I got one question though. So I'm, I'm seeing the street sweeper going down Omaha Avenue. Is this something that could possibly follow behind the street sweeper doing on major intersections or major streets like that?
Absolutely.
Because I see a, I see a value there when you have a vehicle moving ten mile an hour, I don't know how fast it moves, but, you know, a lot slower than normal traffic.
Yeah, it actually could be behind any of that. It kind of comes, not that that's not any more important. I mean, if you got six guys on the road, I guess you'd like to have it behind them. Um, if, you know, if we had an extra guy, it'd be nice to have it behind that as well. That's what it should definitely be designed for. You know, sometimes the lower speeds roads help and those do have pretty good lights on the back of them. No reason that could happen.
Yeah, I think the, the arrows do a decent job. Maybe we just need something a little bit bigger, brighter, higher, so you see it from further away than.
Yeah.
And with the arrows that, you know, if you have a semi coming down, that's where the thought came from.
Yeah.
How much more did you say? What was it?
Uh, two hundred and forty-five dollars. So I think the last, the first one was like, was it thirty thousand seven fifty, I think?
So we, we beat the, the current rate of inflation?
Yeah, there you go.
Good.
The state bid is good, I think, till November on that, when I checked, Minnesota state bid on that.
Any other discussion?
I'm glad to hear there, this is being used and I kind of felt this whole attenuator when we got, when we got our first one was kind of a reactive situation. And now hearing that we're getting a second one and you, at times you could use even more is, is a positive effect of, of being proactive instead of the reactive from what I thought we were before. So thank your crew for using them, that, that we're, that we're keeping people safe out there.
Great point, Council.
On that two hundred and fifty dollars, will there be an engineering fee?
Any other discussion?
I think this is just a safety component that our street department probably hasn't, hasn't had for a while and it, it's, it's, it's been all the way.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Brings us to item thirty-seven. Consideration of approval to purchase a Craftco Supershot one twenty-five through a source well contract in the amount of sixty-two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to replace the step crack machine used by the street division. Could have a motion. All right. Very good. Glad you're still here.
All right. So on this one here, in the outlay, there was a purchase for a Roadhog Millhead, more or less is what that would be, for sixty-nine thousand. And the, right now, just where, where we're at, we have a mill there that we think for the main stuff we're doing will work for what we're doing right now and probably for quite some time. So with that, we had, we're going to put this Craftco Supershot in the next year's CIP to replace. And with saving that money, if we're replacing with the Roadhog, we would keep that out of the CIP and go ahead and order that. Hopefully we'd have it for fall, it's probably twelve weeks out or better to get that. Looked at trying to maybe trade for some used ones or something. Nobody's letting you do that with the market the way it is, just because then they don't have it for people to rent. So at that point, you might as well just get the new one. And they really weren't discounting it much because they don't know when they're coming for them. So we decided to go this route. And so just because that money was there and to keep it out of next year, we thought maybe, we had a lot of breakdowns with the step. It's kind of one of those things, you pay what you get for type deal. And Craftco is one of those things that's kind of the top of the line for a crack machine. So we go that route with it.
Any questions?
Well, I'm kind of stupid with this, so I need Will to explain what this does. I have no idea.
So this is the critical part to keeping the moist, so all the cracks in the streets that you see, and where you see the black lines, this is that, this is what makes that meltor to try to keep that moisture out. You know, we won't get the city covered in one year, of course, but try to get on rotation like we're doing some of the other stuff. But then it doesn't help when we have a machine broke down half a day at a time. So this is just something to try to move forward with and try to get more done. But that's what.
Crack sealer.
Yeah.
Right? And we've talked about that for quite a while, how we want to do that. What is it every, how often do we, we had a, we had an idea of how often we want to do that.
About every five years, yeah. With Will coming on, one of the things he said was that's, they, they, they get all geared up to go out there and do crack sealing and they get out there and then the pot breaks down and it's in the shop for three or four days. And so it's just hard to, hard to stay on top of it. We're losing efficiency. So this made sense. We were trying to balance our CIP for the next ten years and Will was, Will and staff were real comfortable that the mill head we have and the mill system would function just fine. We just need to learn how to use it better. And so being able to drop that out of the budget and shift this from our CIP into this year just helped us reduce our interim CIP costs by sixty-some thousand dollars.
Plus then we'll have a machine and a half, if you have a look at it that way.
Yeah. I, yeah, they won't even take it in on trade, so that wouldn't.
Okay. Sorry. Okay.
What is the life expectancy of this machine with, with good maintenance and?
I think, you know.
Are we talking like ten years?
I'd say ten years or longer.
Or longer.
If you have the right machine, I think probably longer.
And if I'm not mistaken, Craftco is a pretty good crack sealer, kind of top of the line, correct?
It's one of the best ones out there.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I think the step was probably a bit bought on a low bid process, which, you know, it all means you're going to get that when you go that route.
Right. I think it's worth noting, purchasing something like this is going to help the longevity of our streets to improve what we have, well, maybe not improve, but prolong what we have currently, new construction that we have and hopefully make that last longer. So good investment.
Yeah, because we can't keep the moisture out.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you, Will. Item number thirty-eight is consideration of approval to award a contract to Elcorn Paving Construction Company, Inc., for the Tahoe Zuka Softball Fields ADA Concrete Pavement Project for a total amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand eleven dollars and forty-two cents.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Nate, you're up.
Council, thank you for reviewing this tonight. We do have before you the contract with Elcorn Paving in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand eleven dollars and forty-two cents. This is part of two projects tonight that we'll talk about. This is for softball fields one, two, and three. This is to pave that interior section as spectator area to allow everybody to get around regardless and you make it a little more accessible than it is with the crushed, I don't know what it is, it's crushed rock or concrete, yep. Norfolk Public Schools is investing half of this project up to a hundred thousand. So the remainder will come from the occupation tax. The half of that would be eighty-four thousand five oh five seventy-one. And we may have some, a few post-construction improvements with landscaping and stuff, but there are some funds still available for that. This would be an August first timeline to get that done before the softball season for the public schools. So again, this is a great project for, for softball and we've also added that mower, which is really good, going to be really good when that comes in as well to make those improvements out there. Any questions? Staff does recommend that we award the bid to Elcorn Paving. Um, staff does recommend that we, uh, award the bid to Elcorn Paving. We did have, uh, several contractors express interest, but we only received two at the end.
So, what else? Those would be in, just in the concession stand area?
Yeah, that entire area, the, including the, where the bleachers are.
So, the bleachers will be moved?
They'll be pulled out and then, and then remounted to the concrete, yep.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, more a statement, I guess, or a comment, though. Well needed, right? It's a... Hope's an ADA, um, conversations that we've had with public schools and, uh, the issues that we see out there, especially with crushed concrete, people tend to go around with wheelchairs or any other source of aid to help them get around. So, um, very good, positive improvements that, uh, sounds like the changes that are, when we add the concrete, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be pulled out for the most part, uh, if we made any changes out there, hopefully, very soon. But, uh, on that same note, I'd like to probably thank the public schools for coming forward and, and being a partner in this and making this happen.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? None, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
That will bring us to item number thirty-nine is consideration of approval of a contract with Mid-America Golf and Landscape through Sourcewell for infield astroturf at Veterans Memorial Baseball Field in the amount of five hundred and twenty thousand sixty-four dollars. And Nate, you're still there.
I'll make a...
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion, yeah?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yep, this is a, again, a Sourcewell contract under state bid. Um, the price did come in at five hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and fourteen. This is an astroturf product. Um, I'll just run through the funding on this. Two hundred and fifty thousand we have with the Ki, with the CARES Act funds, seventy thou, seventy-five thousand dollars in council priority dollars, um, a hundred thousand dollars in the occupation tax excess, and then Northeast Community College is stepping up with another hundred thousand dollars towards this project. Um, staff does recommend, uh, to award the contract to Mid-America Sports. Uh, Mr. Wilson from Mid-America is also here as well to, um, answer any questions about the turf. Um, we are going to do a few improvements, uh, pulling the home plate back twelve feet. Uh, we'll move the foul line poles out a little bit. Um, we'll also expand the dugout, uh, the leaning fence out a little, a little bit. We're adding a third lane in the, in the bullpen as well on the home side. So, if there's any questions, it'd be happy to answer.
Um, I don't know if Mr. Wilson wants to come up and talk or not. But maybe explain, explain what we're getting here and where else this has been used, where else you might have, um, had turf installed and how it went, things like that. How it does in the winter, all these things.
Yeah, gotcha.
All right, appreciate it.
And would you state your name for it?
Brock, Brock Wilson with Mid-America Sports.
Thank you.
DPA, Mid-America Golf and Landscape. Um, so, this turf, we've, we've used it, I mean, a vast amount of places. Um, you know, some of the most renowned would be Kansas State, KU, um, University of Oklahoma, Oklahoma State, but, uh, tons of high schools, parks and wrecks are going that way, too. Um, we, we've probably completed well over thirty to forty infills this year for full field baseball. Um, and your second part of that question was about the turf?
Yeah, it's, it's use how it, uh, you know, obviously, we have winter, winter months here, but maybe explain how it, how it's maybe better than what we got?
Yeah.
Or what the purpose...
Absolutely. You, you have a beautiful field right now. It's very well maintained. Um, the problem with, with a natural field is you're going with a growing organism, whereas grass, so you're limited on the amount of time you can be on that grass. Once you damage the crown of, of a grass plant, it, it's dying. There's really no bringing it back. And so, the only thing you can inhibit that is, is limiting your amount of time. Um, between that and weather, rain, obviously, gets the, gets the dirt wet and you're not able to play on it. That's, that's the big fad where you've seen turf come in, is you can play when it's wet and your amount of use of that field is pretty much unlimited. So, you can turn the lights on, play on it all day, all night. Um, so, as far as the turf, um, talking with Nate and, and a few other people, um, we went with a, a similar system. Um, this is, this is a baseball system. You know, I know you have the, the field right over there that the high school uses, the football field, but that's, that's for football. Um, and on a football field, you're really worried about head impact issues and safety. On a baseball field, you're really worried about how the ball interacts with that turf. And so, this system is, is engineered and produced for baseball, and it's all about how that ball interacts.
What's the, uh, timeframe on this? I mean, if we award this contract?
Yeah, we have it scheduled for this fall. The window is between October, um, or maybe is it October first through December fifteenth, or somewhere in that range, yep. And how long is it? It's like a, a four-week process once you...
Yeah, you probably have four weeks of, of construction, so actually building the drainage system, putting the pipes in. And then you probably have another two and a half, three weeks of turf installation, obviously. Yeah, I'd like to have a buffer on either side for weather and things like that. So, I'd like to count for probably nine to twelve weeks, somewhere in there.
It worries the longevity of the turf.
Um, I'm, I'm glad you asked. So, so you stepped up in, in turf and, and, and there's some value there. Um, it comes with an eight-year warranty. I would expect that you probably need to plan to have to replace this turf in ten years. With that being said, we have a bunch of fields out that are this exact same product, exact same turf that would be going on here, uh, that are thirteen, fourteen seasons old. So, it, it really just, it depends on how, how you take care of it and how much use it gets.
Weather's well in the winter, I mean, it's frozen.
Yeah, I have tons of, of schools up in, in North Dakota, South Dakota that have it. Um, obviously, you get ice on it, you have to remove the ice in the snow to get on it. But you get a little bit of sunlight you wouldn't believe, even on a twenty-five, thirty-degree day, a little bit of sunlight, it'll melt right off and you're out there playing on it.
Will, the construction into this come from the north side of the park then, mainly? Bring, so we're not congesting the parking lot at Memorial Field?
Yeah, I guess we haven't really talked about that yet, but yeah, we can make sure that we're not, um, we're, we know that it'll be football season probably during, during that time.
It'll be really congested, so if we can work from the north side of the field, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, it gets busy over there, I agree. But about the right time to do it, as much as we use the field. Is there a crumb rubber that goes underneath this, this turf, or is that more for football field?
It's, it's actually infill that stands. So, when you're looking at this fiber, this is just such a rag sample. And then when you install it, you brush these fibers up and you put sand and rubber in this. On a baseball field, it's quite opposite of a football field. Your, your football field's primarily crumb rubber. This will be primarily sand, because you're trying to, you're trying to make that ball interact. If, if, the more rubber pu, you put in it, the higher that ball is going to bounce. And so, they often like it to play just like a dirt infield. So, probably about seventy percent sand, thirty percent rubber.
Very good, thank you.
I, I do have one question. So, you, you talked about the, the, uh, the length of time, ten years perhaps, or longer. Do you have a maintenance, uh, schedule or, uh, cost on that for an annual basis possibly?
Yes, so the, the maintenance side of it, um, obviously goes down drastically compared to what you're doing right now on a, on a, on a natural field. Um, basically, when we do a closeout, we say, here is a maintenance schedule based off of hours of use. Goes back to, you know, here's what the things to do after ten hours of use. After, and you, essentially, you look at your programming and try to extrapolate, you know, based off of weeks or months, when you need to be cleaning that thing. Um, but there's, there's simple things like high-traffic areas, you need to touch those up probably every week. And then there's a sweeping of the field that probably needs to happen bi-weekly or, you know, out of season every, every other month.
And is that something our, our parks department is comfortable doing?
Absolutely, yep.
And then the cost compared to the natural field, um, for annual maintenance, compared to what we're doing right now?
It's pennies on the dollar.
That's, that's great. Great to hear.
And, and no water usage?
So, how far does the turf go past the diamond, the ball diamond? Like, if you, you know what I'm saying? Like, into the outfield at all, or is it just stopped right there?
Yeah, we're gonna...
I don't know how they interact, you know, when your grass starts or your turf starts.
Yep, we're going to extend it ten feet out from, from the, um, infield, so into the outfield. And there should be a...
It's a smooth transition there?
Should be a smooth transition, should be level, not rolling like it is now.
And we had, we had replacement panels for high-traffic areas included in that, too, right?
Yeah, so that's, th, those are your, your most...
The batter's box.
No, those are what wears out the quickest. And so, what actually happens is it's that Velcro piece that's, that's really easy to replace, is that it's actually a more dense, um, so home plate and the, and the pitching rubber, you can just go pull those out whenever you want to.
I want to know who the drag is going to get donated to.
The what?
The drag. A little molar deal.
We've got a nice tarp that, that'll be available, too.
I've seen that drive around that circle for years.
Nathan, am I right? You had some experience with this type of field anyway before you moved here.
Yep, yep. We, um, put one in in Mitchell. Um, they actually just finished it, we went with Mid-America there as well. They just finished it about a month ago, yep.
It's an opportunity, too, like you stated earlier with the, uh, high school, or the car, or the North Fork Public School stepping up and helping out with the softball fields. It's nice to see that here we've got Northeast Community College stepping in and help out with the, that it's all...
Absolutely, well stated.
Hundred percent agree.
Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item number forty, looking for consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-two enacting sections twenty-six dash twenty-one and twenty-six dash sixty-six of the official city code to provide for the levy of special assessments for constructing or extending the city's water system and sewer system and the method of calculation. And for this, we will look to Stephen Ramis. Oh, a motion in second, please.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-two.
Stephen Ramis, please.
Mayor, 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 President and Counsel.
Okay.
Section twenty-six dash twenty-one of this ordinance would update the levy of special assessments language in, uh, for extension to city water system. Section twenty-six dash sixty-six, uh, would add language for method of special assessments for our sanitary sewer system. Um, just a little, little background there. Uh, currently, our, our city code language does not discuss in sufficient detail, I, I guess, for public, for the public to be able to, um, look at our city code and understand what we're doing. Um, it does not really include language around how we assess or do the calculations to assess for utility extensions. What this code is doing is incorporating, uh, the state statute language around assessments into city code, uh, just so that it's clearer that we're matching, uh, what's in our state statutes. Uh, the incorporation of this language into code does not change what we're doing, uh, or how we're doing it. Um, what we are doing and the methods we use are, uh, within the bounds of the state statute. Uh, they are very standard across the United States. Um, generally, we're looking at for, for very uniform properties and adjacency, uh, oftentimes we'll do a linear foot type assessment, um, where things are generally square, rectangular, in similar shape. A lot of times we'll use just a square foot or per lot type assessment, which is what we did tonight on Legacy Bend. Um, sometimes we'll combine them. If the, the lots are odd shaped, some are square, some are rectangular, some have their own very narrow adjacencies, some have really wide adjacencies, they're a narrow lot, but very wide along the, around, along the corridor. Uh, we'll end up doing a calculation both on linear footage and on area, and then we kind of do a fifty-fifty cost split, and that seems to be the most equitable. Uh, so we are charged to find, you know, an equitable split that, that recognizes the benefit to those property owners. And so, again, that's what this is doing, is adopting language just to better identify in city code, uh, our method for that. Again, this is, um, mirroring the language in state statutes.
If no discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of North Fork, Nebraska, to enact section twenty-six dash twenty-one of the official city code to provide for the levy of special assessments for constructing or extending the city's water system and the method of calculation thereof, to enact section twenty-six dash sixty-six of the code to provide for the levy of special assessments for constructing or extending the city's sewer system and the method of calculating thereof, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-two carries on first reading.
Again, I'll make a motion. We suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven eighty-two carries on second and third.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes this city council meeting. We are adjourned.